Good morning, everyone. May we observe the national anthem? Those who are men like me, can we take off our hats or caps or kupa heads, whatever we have?
[singing in Afrikaans]
Thank you very much.
[speaking Afrikaans]
We are going to try to be as efficient as possible.
[speaking Afrikaans]
We are the Portfolio Committee on Mineral Resources and Energy. From the National Assembly.
[speaking Afrikaans]
On my far left, we have Honorable Bilangulu.
[speaking Afrikaans]
Next to him, we have Honorable Kyobe Akamakake. Next to me, we have Honorable Volmarans. On my right hand, we have Honorable Mashawle. Next to Honorable Mashawle, we have Honorable Javta. Next to Honorable Javta, we have Honorable Malinga. I am Mr. Lusi for the Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee.
[speaking Afrikaans]
We are here and, Honorable, we will try to do it in a much more simplified way.
[speaking Afrikaans]
Honorable Volmarans is gonna explain why you are here and what is expected of yourselves. So he is the one who is going to unpack the reasons of being here and you also being invited here. After that, we will give over to Honorable Mashawle to preside over the session of comments that you will be making.
[speaking Afrikaans]
He will state the protocols and procedures of the meeting.
[speaking Afrikaans]
Without any delays, let me give Honorable Volmarans.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good morning, everybody. [speaking Afrikaans] The Chairperson has opened the meeting and I would like to take us just a little bit down memory lane.
[speaking Afrikaans]
Not so long ago, a couple of months ago, we were here in this venue as the Portfolio Committee of Mineral Resources and Energy. On the occasion, we came for what we called the Upstream Petroleum Resources Bill.
[speaking Afrikaans]
We were here to ask you your comments and to interact with you over that bill.
[speaking Afrikaans]
We travelled across the country and this place was one of the places that we visited. We told you that after we consolidate all your comments, the other parts of the country's comments, the other institutions' comments and interaction, we will debate that in the committee and in parliament. We discussed the comments that came from yourselves in terms of transforming the petroleum industry. And we told you that after we discuss it in parliament, it might be accepted, it might be approved or it might be not approved. So I am using this occasion to announce that three days ago, that matter was put into parliament as a discussion and a debate and the Chairperson and the whip of the committee, Remashawle, were representing the committee in parliament. So that bill was ultimately accepted by parliament.
[speaking Afrikaans]
That included your comments and your inputs.
[speaking Afrikaans]
Some of the issues that you mentioned were put into our discussions.
[speaking Afrikaans]
So it just shows how important it is to come back to you and thank you once more for your participation then as we would require it on this bill. So without further expanding on it, we are here today on the Electricity Regulation Amendment Bill.
[speaking Afrikaans]
The department has deemed it fit to do amendments or to propose amendments on an Act of 2006 that regulates the electricity. The regulations within the electricity comes at a time where everybody knows that we are suffering from load shedding, there is not much activity within the space and we need more of engagements in showing how we can overcome the crises that we are in. The bill that the department is proposing and we as a committee are going around engaging people seeks to amend those provisions in the Act that is of 2006. The bill seeks to improve the administration of how electricity regulation is done. The bill within itself talks about how we go around in providing additional electricity within the electricity framework. The bill intends to explore and seek our advice on how do we go around in adding additional electricity to the electricity environment. In order to provide more electricity to an ever-expanding community, the bill explores how do we instill more infrastructure on the electricity environment. The bill acknowledges that we are being serviced by Eskom as a state-owned company and Eskom does a number of duties with regard to electricity. It does generation, it does distribution, it does transmission. The bill seeks to cut this into blocks, explore into how we can expand and have generation on its own, transmission on its own and distribution on its own. The bill seeks to say these transmissions, distribution and generations would be done also by state-owned companies. In such an event, you are talking about unbundling the activities of Eskom.
[speaking Afrikaans]
It does not say that we are privatizing or the bill privatises Eskom.
[speaking Afrikaans]
It says there will be a holding company which Eskom has got authority over and other state-owned companies as subsidiaries that helps Eskom in doing all this other stuff. The bill also says they would want to open the market for additional role players in this industry. So it means that the state-owned companies with any other company that is in a position to do distribution and transmission would be allowed to participate in the industry. And in that scenario, you encourage competition between the role players in terms of provision of electricity.
[speaking Afrikaans]
Now, when people are starting to compete amongst themselves about provision of a service, you need somebody to regulate so that they cannot manipulate the tariffs and prices. You also need somebody who keeps an eye on how the licenses are being issued.
[speaking Afrikaans]
Currently, we have such institution called NERSA is the National Electricity Regulatory Authority, which is also state-owned. In the bill, the bill suggests that NERSA must be given those powers assigned to it so that it can properly regulate the tariff provision so that it must not be quite mapereko ka di tarifsi za mutlakas. It will also be issuing licenses according to the regulations that would be in place.
[speaking Afrikaans]
A lot of people from where we have gone before and in our daily life, we hear about the sabotage of the infrastructure on our electricity. It happens at a high scale, it happens at a local scale and what is more often talked about is the cable theft issues. Mostly when we are under load shedding, there is bound to happen that we lose a cable through theft and the whole community is affected. So in the bill, the discussion is about criminalizing the theft of this cable, putting measures in place on sentencing or fines so that we deal with the sketch of the theft of this infrastructure. So the bill tries to encompass all the issues that are electricity-related to be regulated in the Act if it happens. The bill provides for intervention by the minister on certain issues that come to his attention or lens on his desk. The powers would be commensurate with the duties and the mandate of the electricity environment. So it is important upon ourselves to interact with the bill and give us your views so that when we go back to parliament as a portfolio, we would be in a position to discuss what comes from your good selves, what comes out of the NGOs, what comes out of everybody who will be affected by this bill when it is enacted. You have an opportunity as a member of the society to say you agree with this bill. You also have an opportunity freely to say you don't agree with the provisions of this bill. We as a committee are not here to tell you to support the bill. We want to hear from you what do you think about the bill and further suggestions that might improve or you can throw it out of the window. It is upon yourself. So all your comments, positive, negative, will be put together with the comments from other communities and then we will have a discussion as a portfolio and later in the National Assembly. It does not mean that everything that has been written on there is the gospel truth because some of you might identify gaps that we might have not seen or we are blindsided or that has not come to our attention. You are free to do so. So that is a synopsis, that is a summary of the bill that you would want to talk to us about. Thank you very much, Honorable Volmarans, and greetings again to...
[speaking Afrikaans]
Last time we came here as Honorable Volmarans has said.
[speaking Afrikaans]
We had an accident of a taxi which killed three people. Two of them were from this place. May we once again rise and give them a moment of silence. Thank you.
[speaking Afrikaans]
That was sad news. Now it's a good news. Yesterday was a very important day for our country in the world of sports. On cricket, we managed to defeat Pakistan. On World Cup. Today is an even better day. The Springboks are playing against New Zealand. And as patriotic South Africans. We should all support them. Thank you very much. So back to the bill. I'm going to take ten hands of people who want to speak. Now these chairs that are not occupied here are going to be occupied by people who want to speak. Now, before we go to an area like this one, we first look and scan the languages. These ladies and gentlemen here are here to make sure...
Are here to make sure that we hear any language that you would want to use when you submit your views.
Bamona huthla esabunite ba hori. Ru na re le komite ruutwa din tlatzaluna liditswele tso dietsa mona. Kapu ye wiliweli na lso hetangubua ka yon.
Including the twelfth language.
Re ikiyeli lidiseli ena ya bulishumele mitzimedi.
So please feel free to speak in any language of your choice.
Katela ye oheli ya pepe to hori le lukuluwe. Lebe libu lukuluwe ba ubua kapu ye wiliweli bata we bua ya heto ya lo.
When I went to parliament, I was trained to chair sessions.
Jole parliamente haru rubelahu etela bili di kopano seze.
One thing I was taught is to manage time.
Ye wuya din thwaze huthoka iki rutwe ngke hori ki elehtoka na ko kitama isena ko hankli.
And to be attentive.
Le hori ki elehtoka ki mamela hankli.
So that I tell whether the person is speaking about what we are here for or not.
Hori ki hona hutu sisahori motu ubua kaseenaso hori limona kasona kapache.
I know we have all sorts of problems.
Kiatsa ba renali matata ma ngata hulu afapani.
But let's stick to the bill.
Mpa haribuwe ka bili ena re limona ka yon.
But I won't stop you if you speak about something else that you're right.
Mpa hakena uti ba iba unutwale koti. Ubua kantwenweka tu.
Just respect, just respect why we are here.
Re batafela uktisa uktlesinkuwa nunu.
I won't allocate time for now.
Hakena le fana akoki, hakena le belana ko ha jole.
But when I stop you, you must know you have spoken too much.
Mpa utsebo hori hakutiba ku emisa, utsebo usobuile lololol.
Can we start identifying hands?
Re kakala ka hori re shebe ma obapa misa matzo utlabua.
Maybe before we do that.
Mpa pele rekala wetsa jolo.
We normally, when we arrive in a place, want to knock first and be welcomed. Is there a councillor here or chiefs, indunas?
Jole ha ngata ha rifitla sevake nse sinlisinre ratu bona orna re amuele ile na. Ikaba honale ma councillora alintenkuwa nunu mona. Kapabaka sihloho mare na jalo le ma tunana.
Okay, I think there are no councillors. We have knocked, you have welcomed us.
Kiinkahora ha honama councillora ki lingkuwa nunu mona otla re amuele.
Okay, let's take hands.
Harinke matsohe abatu baba tangubua.
This side, sir, with the cap, you are number one. Can you take a chair?
Ntatemau kakatiwa ouapi ukatla kapili monasutunu.
I'm looking for number two.
Wabu bedi.
Number two. Number three.
Wabu raru.
Number four.
Wabune.
Number five.
Wabushanu.
Let's go, guys. I'm looking for hands. Number six.
Wabutsilela jolo.
Sixi.
Ah si.
Take number five there.
Nka sutunosa wushanu.
That's seven, eh? I'm looking for eight.
Re bata waburo bedi.
I don't want to leave here people thinking that we have closed people to speak.
Hakimatla retzama imona batwana ane uruba tiviile ubafa muenyetla wubua.
We are looking for how many, two?
Re shota baba rar.
Hands. Number eight. Can you please take the chair, sir?
Atame longke sutunu.
Nine. The last one.
Luauka ten.
The last one, ten. Now, I know people are afraid to speak.
Kiatsa baba tuva sava ubua.
Now, but this ten will break the ice so that you are comfortable. I'll open for another round. Don't worry, I saw you, sir. You were raising your hand, you will be number one on the second round and then I will take other hands. Lamu will be number two.
Bana ba limona de shume ba tu tla ba etsa hori baba mbebeli muenyetla woho na ubua. Ki boni matso alu na kitla buela kilifamo nyetla lilo.
Now, let me say something and please interpret when I'm done because you will disturb the flow of what I want to say. So this camera, this one. And I need your attention, sir, number one. Number one.
Ntatemuapi.
I also need your attention. This camera here is live on 408. My father taught me something that whenever you go somewhere, you are not representing yourself. You are representing the surname and the clan name. And please don't embarrass us wherever you are and whatever you say. So there are people where we come from. They come here sometimes drunk, sometimes sober, but what they say. If you belong to that surname, you would really get worried. But I'm not intimidating you, I'm just saying bear in mind that you are representing your family, your organization. Wherever you come from, if you are representing Mopogo Pogo, that's fine. So before you speak, you must say your name, your surname. If you belong to an organization like an NGO, soccer team, political party, you let us know. We must record that so that we know how many people from this organization have said what. And at the end or in the beginning, tell us whether you support or you don't support the bill. You remember Honorable Volmarans said it's your choice. We are not here to have you supporting. We are not here to have you rejecting. It's your choice, but please do us a favor for record purposes. Those people there and there are recording. If you have something in writing, whether on your cellphone or on paper that you have prepared for submission, when you are done, please submit it to the people. Translation, please?
Jole intato wahlalu sa mona hori enama atswanting. Intatai umuruti le hori. Kaika pakai mayanting u emela lilukola hai. U emela fani yahi, u emela soboko, ibilo emela limo atswanting. Jole katela jolo ilaku jolo, luna wohali thothla libuamo. Lesibo hori le iki emela le emesi batwaba. Ible mchomu nganaba litwa mi xarro, ye mingi etzing. Ye wintla batla witlaki samu na ki hori. Lesibo u di hati soze. Di tzwala bili, jolo kanse ribua je na na. Basenseba hati samani 404. Jolo elehtoka so usibua. Dibaka te dinsebatwa ngutsoona. Baile ba fuma na kanakotse di ngurumotothla kapili utlothla bua ansama ikuto. Kanakwe wu utlasa pepe to yata. Ika pa inka pa inye bang imu utlasa pepe to yaya ona. Jole o elehtoka howuthothla ubua hori. Nthongu lo ngoto ibua mona ya hatiseya. Ible kete lo o kalapileka hori u itzibiso ukuena mang. Wa hukai, le hurumchomu ngai ba ona lishopasosimizing. U emesishopasifing. Obaha pe. Nthwe ye weli mchokaku, re tlerha so kete la bua yaha. Utthala ise hori na. Uai ananela bili ena skamalawse. Na wasi ananela kapao wasi ananeli na. Joloka si guisa pelisi le sa shalusa hori. Haliko belu hori le ananela skamulao kapali ananela. Mpa filo li tatala mea ultha ise hori na. Wenau emikaika yon. It's like killing that.
Sir, more than two million people are ready for you. Can you start?
Ba fitan se di millionise pedi ba umameti ukakala he.
Ikialebo awetapi le ba... Ikialebo awetapi le bo... Hasai li sechabing. Lo lewe la mwenye tla ona koba na. Lo yenze wa miti wa kashiiko. Kalibitso ki masapo tsukolo. Huthwa mut... Huthwa Tabansu.
Kitoku pansi ki bua hakutiba ka litzo umpeswa kasa uthitis. Thank you for this opportunity that you have given us. I'm Masapo from Tabansu.
Katla samohaklo ki member RIA. Katla samohaklo ki meba RIA ANC, Volunteer ANC.
I'm the Member of Volunteer ANC.
Ki emi mona kanthaya bili eki utwa ubua ka yon.
I'm here in respect of the bill that I have heard presented here.
Sekisboni, le sekisbona ma kethla. Si etlala. Ntene ya mutlakasi. Nkileka etzatlaiso mo governmentenya ro na onta ti president.
I have seen things happen in regard to our electricity. I once made an appeal to our president.
Ke ko power president, bulama so sheba secretary. Ntatembalu la bulama so kaofel. Le shebe hori na wewe tala. Ntaba hulu ikara di supply chainisa government.
I have asked them to open their eyes and look. The main problem is within the supply chains of government.
Hori chalate ya governmente. Engata ha hulu kara ma fa pa supply chaini.
There's a lot of money from government within the supply chains.
Motu fuma na hori, motu alemon ufuatenda ra. Ye mossebezi olemon wadi millionise engata.
Where you will find out that only millions of friends are being allocated to one person for a particular tender.
Hori kara di supply chaini, ba shebe. Ba tuwa na ndidik... Di kampani, baritlen di kampani. Bakafua mossebezi, ntsenza di supply chaini. Di fetu len tu mossebezi chalte arulelan. Husibo salacha de te, engata kara ma fa pa awa di supply chaini.
So that they can have an eye and look at what is happening within the supply chains. The people can be given jobs within the supply chain so that there's still a lot of money left there in.
Ka ho chojolo, kani ti... Official President, ide ya ngara. Re tla kutela owee na ba mpa li... Ntunabi tzean reference number katla ise yo yaka yenu. Me wugyalala fela tabeni ya di supply chaini. Ki roholo na. Ki nyama so kara di supply chaini. Chalate engata ngata yo, i arulela se chaba. Hubeli chalate e sala. Di supply chaini di fetu le mossebeziwa karulela no. Kara batwa turing di kampani ti register uwi.
The Office of the President responded to my appeal and they gave me a reference number and they said they will answer to my request. And therefore, I'm appealing to you as well to put an eye on the supply chains within the government sectors.
Ke ko pa huthla fela mono obani. Ki seni ki batogua kasona kashiiko.
That's all that I wanted to say today.
Ka ho chojolo ki supporta bili ena eli bua ka yonakashiiko.
By so saying, I support the bill that we are talking about today.
Ikialebo wa ke tla fela mono.
Thank you, that's all.
Revolutionary greetings, everyone.
Ikiyali medisa bole.
My name is Tumien Opisu.
Libisolaka di Tumien Opisu.
I want to say that...
Ki batla hori.
There is where I sup... There is a part that I support the bill.
Honale karulo isenyu huionaki amanana langsi skamalawse na.
And there is also a part that I don't support the bill.
Obuela hape honale karulo ye huionaki sa ananeli bilena.
First and foremost.
Nklayapil.
I want to ask how do we determine a tariff price?
Ki batla otsima uvena rifitla jolo bu emomba hori. Huso nitsu huli fshewu kaai.
Because right now the tariff is not considering a lot of people.
Obani ha jole ha sheba di tifelo kapadi tifiso ze batwadi etze tson. Hadie apkaritze batu bole, baba ngat.
I mean, the parliament or the government should always consider the people when it makes tariff prices.
Parliamente kapase chaba. Musoka kakare, so sonso elehtoka se chaba. Pele ba fikaketun sa horu li fshewu kaai.
Because right now it looks as if we are leaving the people behind.
Obani ha jole senasibona la ikari siaba tumorao.
Because it's not everyone that can afford electricity prices right now.
Obani asimutu emuli mwenye ka hona huli di tifelo zebe hueng ha jole zamutlakas.
One other thing that I want to raise is that...
Nklayengwe kibatla wetha isakin.
In terms of the unbundling. Unbundling. Unbundling of Eskom.
Ha re sheba bu emobo Eskomo etze din tokabona?
Yes, we... I know that we must consider.
Kiatsa ba retsonso elehtoka?
I'm going to be technical right now. I don't mean to be technical.
Ki thothla ki thaisa din khaanki ha jole?
When Eskom is unbundling the how it is doing electricity.
Nakoya Eskomo etza ndikaro ha nyoka yonata mutlakasi?
We should consider the transitioning of electricity.
Sonso re shebe zama isoyamutlakasi?
Because right now you should consider the environment we are living in.
Obani ha jole batsonso sheba, tikulu mo repilanti.
And when we look at how electricity is being generated.
Ha re sheba zelayo mutlakasu u tama isonka ona, u etzonka yon?
There are fifty megahertz.
Di fifteen megahertz is that ona?
That we are receiving.
Se u ri di fuma na.
It is only the provision of electricity that we are in right now.
Ki yonafela pano erbe le huionaya mutlakasi ha jole?
So now since you want a carbon-free energy.
Jolo ka hariba tla mutlakasi osinangaboni?
There are other things that we are going to leave with in terms of electricity.
Honale intose di tseritothla ngrepilakatsona bu emomba mutlakasi?
Like, let's say we unbundle a household.
Ha re re... Fanaka mutlakasi ntru, bu emomba ntru kaufela?
I think one of the things that we are going to leave is the plugs.
Nthoye wera to pelanka yon na hankle ntsi kiri plaka?
I think the lights, we are going to unbundle them because...
Re tla mea katela jolo re etze karulela no ya di lighti?
Because we can use a carbon-free energy for the lights.
Obani re kasebedisa mutlakasi o osinangabon?
In terms of the plugs, I mean the plugs, they carry a lot of load.
Ha re sheba tabeni ya di plaka, so na dinka mutlakasomongat?
So that is why I'm saying that we are going to leave with them.
Ki katela neki rin, re kaspilakatson?
In terms of how we should make sure that they let the DB box and electricity and... So that there is no stealing of electricity.
Ha re sheba ma boko songa ona, u etzeza huska ba libusho e tzeon ba mutlakasi?
I think there should be some measures that are in place.
Huso nitsu hubeli di hatu ze itzenzebe hueng.
So that Eskom or whatever the supplier of electricity.
U etzeza hori Eskom, kapabanga pa manya fananga mutlakasi?
Should install a measure that can trace where the stealing is happening.
Ba kenyadi zila, se u kazona ritla hona. Uthacho na huleku nuu hori. Bushoduba mutlakasi buwetsala kaai.
That's very important, as you conclude.
Obushoka jolo ka utketela?
Yes, in conclusion, I want to say that thank you, parliament, for bringing this bill to us.
Ha ki kete la ki batla ukiyali bo, parliamente ka utlisas bilena huru na.
We are looking forward to... We are looking forward to the, our inputs to be considered.
Re ba tla, re shebila huru di kupo, zavuna di tla petahats?
Thank you very much.
Kiya lemo.
Ndati Tumelo, before, before tama, if you can just return for a few seconds there.
Before you leave, ndati Tumelo?
When we are closing, you said you are happy that we are here and then we must take your inputs into consideration, which we will do. Maro retlakanze tlohonya, nawarha wito horu wadumela, warha wadumeli, yano, nerero ribe monke, hori omoka inanga.
Okay.
Uilewa shalo samona ha unu katela tama ya horu aleboa, ka oribe rikile unu namona. Impajani, oribe iletsi etingarete bukona wadumelana, lis kamlaoka pa wadumelan?
No, I, I support the bill.
Ki, ananela skamlaosina?
And one other issue is that Nelsa.
Ntiya yango a peko Nelsa?
I support Nelsa to be the, the one that regulates the tariff prices.
Ki, ananela Nelsa oribe bo na ba tanga buheto?
Yano, oze naka backdoor, yano, happen.
Now you are entering with a backdoor now.
Some, no, it's fine, we have, we have captured it, but you might be having more that you would want to say. And the table there is in a position to also accommodate beyond what you wanted to say.
Okay.
And maybe at a later stage as well, we will also pronounce on other submissions that you will do through email and so on.
Okay.
But for now, we are, we are satisfied, but you can also approach them if there's anything that you would want to do further than that.
Kana ha isala, horu sanali ho honu tla ba tlangu tzwala pila ka ona. Joalita fuleya nemora oma, ni bafa monyetali timbonuru, kana tzwala pila ansadi ntsata omono. La usoka tela ritla hona, fa naka se bakawana, di ntsase di nseba tuwa ba tla utlaisama ikutlobona, ba kawa romelaka ina.
No, thank you, thank you once again, it's crystal clear, thank you.
Kiya lebowa, kiya lebowa, hul. Wa kiya lebowa, kala bizwa?
Thank you, my name?
Ki Alfonso Mukoto.
Alfonso Mukoto.
Wakana se isenaka ki African National Congress.
Ki welatlasa African National Congress?
Musebeziwa kasi chabe, inki award committee.
I'm a award committee, that's my job within the community.
Ki amo yala biliyena, obani, kenalema ba kawana, obani, inki amo heela, ki ba taki nali sepo.
I accept this bill, I have reasons why I do so, I have faith.
Ze po i kenan Leon, kiya hori, mosomo biliyena, haese sebeza, kapase kamlaosina, hasese sebeza.
My hope is that maybe when this bill is, is now at work.
Si krore tusaga leba etapele, sebezi tusaga leba la hotla barona, ele ntwae ele uwele roona.
It will help us and it will also help our, help our councillors as they are one with us.
Obani, inki chojwalo?
Why am I saying so?
Se chaba sa roona?
Our community.
Sena le Tumelo, homotlakasi ha utiwa, ha utima. Putiwa kele councilloraka gabomo, kaputiwa kabomo.
Have this belief that when electricity goes off, it, that is done by a councillor deliberately or whoever does it, does it purposely.
Ki katiya biliyena, obani, eka ka ikrodisa, ze po ye itzen se chabi.
I like this bill because it seems that it will bring some hope within our communities.
Ha ki kro ba motelela hori, ki kro ama fele di ntsaza, ba xokwa zenan lekele lo monaleman?
I'm not going to be long, but I'm going to take some, to give some parts here and there, inputs here and there.
Kenale ko opo?
I have a request.
Popo yena iki kroye etza?
My request?
Ki etza, ki etza, obani?
I do it because.
Ki ugrisi sa horu, haleka lae amo heela, ho, hutrodisa bonolo bo itzen se chabing, ma ba pile tabaya mutakasi, nzekele mutakasi.
That should you accept it, this is going to bring some relief to the community, I'm still on the issue of electricity.
Impa, ha ki kro mama na hukuaka ma bizwa abat?
I'm not here to mention people's names.
Ke tla etamoshala ka nayika ikena jwalo, impa eho se jwalo?
I will make an example, mentioning my name as if it's me who is like that, whereas it's not true.
Moshalo ki ba tanga huwesa kona?
The example that I would like to make is this.
Ha kele pusoi ki tla neki hi rabatwa semama kena, semama kena, semama kena momotlakati.
When I'm in government, I will, I, I, I give jobs to uncertain people. Call them so-and-so come and work with electricity, so-and-so come in and work.
Hasa kelele ku epuso ngaba tla shabaka?
After I've been chased away or dismissed from work because of my, because I was not doing well.
Ba tu bani benenze ki ba hi ra, ki kroba ke niya mo ya?
Those people I have been hiring, I will then influence them.
Katile eje?
In this way.
Wenanyo le nyomomo mutakasi mo?
So-and-so within the electricity.
Councillor, mama le councillor, mama le councillor, mama, haba huwa ke niya mutakasi ka ika, uskaba yesa ntsheu?
If they say to you, you must go, councillor so-and-so and so-and-so. If they say to you, go and connect electricity at a certain place, don't do that.
Uskaba yesa, councillor, nde ude se chabensha, hey, uskaba yesa?
Don't do that for that councillor and the community as well.
Ha ki ba tu yapi la, holo kantena leba tuwa holo, limkutuile na iki hoka i.
I don't want to go far with this, you are elderly people, you understand what I said.
Ki ko pa lele pa amen, delekele seli shontwe, obani, ikozi ha holo se chabing, etza oka se chaba. Se kroke mutakasi onzo olite, se krokele ze po pusoi niya roona. Honaki udiya pusoya honaki akopa, lafe la nlifuha holo, ntonza muta ona uje nana?
Please put an eye on such things because this is a problem, this creates a problem to us as the community members and to the community as whole. Please have a look at that.
Ki mo honaki re, inki seza biliyena, obani, kenale ze po yore, ikrodisa di ntwaze bo xokwa, ze sa kroye lehan se chabing, nzekele mutakasi.
That is why I say I support this bill because it will bring some changes that are very important to the communities. I've said still on the issue of electricity.
Ki leboana koe ki fueng, ki leboale parlamente ya ona etile ukuano, kiya lebowa?
For the opportunity that you have given me, I also thank our parliament for coming down to us, thank you.
Thank you.
Ki rato dumedisa, nakali bizwa ki matsiri sobashakaasi, ki sa pota bi.
Greetings, my name is Matiriso Basakaasi and I support the bill.
Ki ratla hola hebuata beniya busho dibadi cable li?
I was very interested when it spoke about the cable theft.
So, ki rata mohongo, dakani ichinchilo kinto mohomo shawari, ni cable li ichinsho kinyo tdrat, isanjozeli aluminium. Ma, busho dibati monsebo zolapili, ki rata oka etza, li kachincha me foto mon, ika za makatiya salifaz.
I liked it when they changed the type of cable from metal to aluminium, but the cable theft is still continuing. I think another method that could work would be to put the cables underground, kiya lebo, thank you.
Greetings, honorebals.
Bu eputero, nakim, ki bolekomra, nakim, ki re.
Ha, niya neko fe, ya, shab.
Ki shab. Nakimolebochen gutmene, ki welamo lefepela A N C, ki bile kilawa award committee.
My name is Molebochen, I am from the A N C and I'm also a member of the award committee.
Ki lebochezi, zatla hunpienu?
I'm very thankful for this day.
Luka amaha, zatla hunpienu ili Nelsa?
And also accepting the bill today.
Ki kuleki etapele ana are, leha otu hukuwa, sewa tla husebuwa chapehela, se amana lezati la hunnu ya kaba ya bili?
I heard the chair actually expressing the thought that when we speak today, it has to be an endeavor to speak to the bill.
Ina kanaseki kusubuwa, sewa la mutlasa, kase uka ba ma ba bili, hutu, hutu chama mutakasi, sentleka hai hutu chama mutakasi.
So what I want to express is in relation to cable theft.
Mo tabeniya hutu chama mutakasi, inilele, sedinza di kesi sa hori, honaleba hulu, baba over sixty five, baba hutu chama mutakasi.
And then what I want to focus on is the fact that there are elderly people over sixty years of age who have an experience of theft cable that has affected their power.
Mo tabeniye yalu, harita maria kosentlekelekanu, sana basadiwa because of age, ebaleon, honu ba hupri, bari bo neba tshanesi ba patal.
And then we've come to realize that they do have a problem where since they are elderly, they are not able to take steps to go and pay for themselves, someone has to do it for them.
Ki tla loha niya hori, ki ma emua alimohoni, abu tiso ba hutu badiki bulebu tiranfori biliyala inele taka, inele matata?
And then I do seem to realize that this could actually also a contributory factor in things that are actually implemented into the bill. That are there to basically sort out the problem.
Oka re committeeena, ki ra hi fi chla, mo parlamenteng, ika tisa rekupa, ki ko pa hori, itisa tata kaba tu ba over, iji baba sakunu hui dira sebi.
So I would like to put a request to the committee that when you arrive in the parliament, please focus a lot on a help that is related to helping the elderly who are over the age of sixty. Who are not, who are helpless, not able to do anything for themselves.
Ki tla loha niya, lukusisa hori, ba tu ba ba tshanesi le bao, tu ba onli di kula na ba, 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 ba da bawa ne ba basilela. Ba, shabane li, ba tshanesi, usidira ka madinya na bananluon, haba tshanesi ba kopa tla chalatea tla ka, ya mutakasi, oki na, kopa tala thirteen thousand, ha hori. Hori, koba tata katu, lemu se, mo husho ne mutenka mukuk, obuima.
So we need to understand that when there is a need for them to make any payment, they are not able to pay irrespective of what a tariff has been put. So the situation which they are actually in, it's so difficult that they are not able to do that.
Se sen sabutoka ki hori, tiraxalo, idira chetse niya ba tu ba ba, ba ba fuma ninkosi ya mutakasi, omo wa bo neki leka bua liye.
And then one other thing that, the event that is taking place is that the people who actually ended up in danger of, of being electrocuted by the electricity. Is that, is one of them whom I actually had an opportunity to speak to.
Nakoye, e wanza hutu mutakasi, gana kan, gana kan, nalileteima, la ba tu, ba, ba se chaba, hori, mo five daysing enereza ma busuku bole, repadrol. Ki, kuwa hori, omo wa, omuliste niya ba tu ba ba utwang, ka disa etah hori, ha liyene ad, re bo ne mo five daysing, ye retohobere kankayone. Khatla ba husa hutu chama mutakasi, hao kaka hutu chama mutakasi?
And then when I came to learn that one of them was actually in the list of the people who are stealing power cables. Then I wanted to see if maybe the strategies put in place within the next five years will actually be able to sort out and to resolve the problems that you are focusing on.
Ho ba onala hori, mara hamata tiya matano, a, husena sepesu uju sensea kable la mutakasi, ya ba ra, re fa nacheansi, re, 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 repabikiniyan, ki hati ra hori tla tiraxala, kato opo isunkoli ke shini?
And then we realized that actually the five days that we actually put in a plan, there was obviously a reduction of the incident of the theft of power cables. And then, we then were able to give one another a chance, but by the moment when we relaxed a bit, the problem started escalating again.
Yano, renereka hori, kroku tusana le, la, re le se chaba.
So now as members of the community, we are trying to work hand in hand with you to help one another.
Mo holi seponisa.
And also including the police.
Baban ba ba tu banza ba hutu ra ba isi.
And some of the people who actually stole these are the ones whom we know.
E biliya kenale case, ere berakanalone ya motu, o kilen abo bo ni motra hutu mo, le na hana bo, da, baba nsa motu, ya no, renere ko pa ka tue tue for. Ha re dira diwa, ere dirangeli di award committee li, 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 li. Mo holi se chab, please, rempere bualema ponse, lo rebleba na ba re tuso honen, na kong, ha re ya risa di case, ba ba tla bu pa ki, la bu pa ki, ba bu bo neki bu, abansha motu after two days.
And then we do have a case that we actually open in relation to one of them whom we know because we are trying to work together with members of the police. And sometimes when we have a case on hand and we try to actually report it, they would want a case number from us. And sometimes they need a solid evidence of the things that we are actually coming to report to them. So we are asking for a cooperation and working together between us and the police and maybe you can help us.
Oka re di no kwanese di kadirela, le yano leli, le tiraleko, ba tshawe, ba, ba re baye, le, 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 na kotoonko, ki tla, ki dumelanana.
I will stop there, but we wish that these people can actually have a firm sentence when they are being judged according to the way they think that they committed. But thank you very much, this is exactly where I will end with my submission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ba etapelu koto?
Good morning to the elders.
Ki tabila holo, ha lemona kato liksia tabaya, ya mutakasi, sasa tivi kapadi lo taro, ditu ukala, kapadi na ukala, jolo katwa e.
I'm happy that we are here to discuss the issue of electricity, even though I don't know whether you will hear our comments or not, as is sometimes the case.
Kali bizwa, nakitabo mohotu, ki tlaya what twenty seven, ki mu itaupi kara A N C, ki sa lebe la, monyetao finkapa ofi.
My name is Devo Mohotu and I'm a volunteer within the A N C without looking for any opportunities.
Ba etapelu waka, nakina lebo tata, belu muwari, habo na lo ka bu pilo. Ki opala na konye fitile Covid nineteen ere bo la it, ufuma na anuwe, rna lebo tata, nuwe nana lebo tata mbama mutakasi, di fridgesa ona ta sonu, tena re direki le na konye wefitile, dia shwa di abola wa kilu tshedi?
I have a problem, we saw that Covid nineteen brought a lot of problems and even now with load shedding, our fridges which we bought with hardship are now being destroyed by this load shedding.
Ha ki sokomeela, kapaitu ukua hanze, hullua, ka di kibo lezele muwari, dia utuwa, di kibo lezele hadina kuwa ela, utuwa. Obani mutakasi wa wa, di kibo lezele hadibele mutakasi. Ditonguwa, lena ngalo einka, kibo leo, bani ki tzwari ki tala, ngalo einka, ki holi wo, ja?
When I hear about the problem of load cable theft, yes, it is indeed the truth, the cable theft will not stop because people are hungry, even myself. I would go and steal those cables in order to feed myself.
Ha re shokomeela ba etapelu waka, lilo na, haleli chinana, lili ketapili, lili kapili, lili parlamenta aru na. Le tama li ukisi se, butibomba pilota lo na hori, motu alla pili, ntongolewa eka yang, eka etangora aje mutu tunwo, oke etabo nete bauri, o etabo nete bauri aje.
You as leadership should also understand and know from the bottom of the heart, of your heart, that as a hungry person, you will do whatever you need to do. You will dig up that cable if it is the thing that will feed you.
Nete eten se chabensaru na, refeyuwa kibo etapele baro na, obani, honajwalo?
Our problem is that we are let down by the leadership. The leadership asks our world committee members to run around our communities and look for the people that are stealing cables. But after they find them, they report their names and nothing happens. The matter ends there. So as a person, you ask yourself, maybe I should also be stealing this cable because nothing is happening. So I think that if we work together as the public and the parliamentary committees, we would be able to solve these issues because the people on the ground are the ones that know what is happening better than the leadership. Us as the communities of Botshabelo in the different alphabets, we are very hurt when our electricity is switched off because we pay for electricity. We buy it straight. We don't owe for electricity. I can make an example that the people in the H section, they only buy electricity monthly, but their electricity is never switched off. And us in other areas, we buy for ten rands, three units, and we buy that every day, but it doesn't last us. You can't even cook a full meal. I would appeal to you as leaders to speak to your leaders, to work with us as we can help you solve the problems. Or maybe make a plan for us to also not have our electricity cut off monthly like it is always done. Thank you and I support the bill.
Greetings to the House. My name is Vusi Gevezza. I'm a world committee in World Thirteen. I do understand the bill, but there are questions that I have. But if I could ask those questions, maybe it will take the whole day. The thing that I can say that there is a way forward that the government now is trying to do. Like how to eradicate the load shedding. And simply when you eradicate the load shedding, then even those cable thefts, they will stop. So now the thing is if they can install the nutrients, more nutrients, it will overcome the load shedding and those cable thefts, it will stop because they can't steal the electricity while the electricity is on. Because I heard something that even the subcontractors, they will be included in this. But my question, it's only one regarding that. What happened to that 3.8, no, thirty-eight point, point five billion that was given by Escom to build up the towers? It did not happen. And still, we are still running out of load shedding. It's taking over every time. And now people are stealing cables, are doing all those things that they should not do. Initially, I would like to say we have now to categorize the catastrophic events that are happening in our government. I would like to say thank you.
I'd like to thank the leadership that is here today. My name is Inok Moare and I'm a member of the ANC and Sanku. I would like to start by saying I support the bill. But I have an issue with the matter of the regulatory body. I wish that NERSA would have a monitoring and evaluation committee. Because I wonder if NERSA, when it is contemplating tariffs, whether it considers the poor people. For example, where I live in Tabancho, we use Escom. Units for ten rands amount to five point three.
Yeah, I think he is pleading that the noise levels must be low. And I happen to agree with him. They are a bit high.
So I wonder if when NERSA is planning tariffs, the people that sit on those committees, are they from rich households? Because it seems they do not consider the disadvantaged people. So I'd like to say. NERSA is still going to overlook the issue of license allocation and also the state-owned entities of how they distribute electricity. I like the part where state-owned companies are going to be included to help Escom in the transmission and generation of electricity. Because as I see it, Escom could generate the electricity, but the state-owned companies could transmit and distribute the electricity. Because in this way, the state-owned companies would also have to account for the transmission and generation and distribution, unlike where Escom is accounting for all the sectors. So what I would like to know is as they say they would be transmitting the electricity that they get from Escom, would they be transmitting it at the same tariffs or will there be differentiation in tariffs? State-owned companies, including the subcontractors. Because I could say that I agree with the bill, but find that these other third parties, including the state-owned companies and subcontractors, would give us electricity at lower rates than we would get from Escom. So that's my issue. For example, where I stay in Botshabelo, we are hit a lot by, or affected a lot by load shedding because we are supplied by Escom. But in Tabancho, they are supplied by another entity. And you would see that when we have load shedding, they don't. So even if I would like for Sanku to come and distribute electricity where I stay, the problem is that Sanku tariffs are lower than the ones given by Escom. So I would like to appeal to the parliamentary committee to look at the issue of whether these third-party suppliers are using the same tariffs as Escom or would they be using lower tariffs? As such, I would like to say I support the bill. Thank you.
Greetings everyone. I'm very thankful for the opportunity given me. My name is Masiriso Majodi. And then I'm from Blom in World Four.
World Committee?
In a world committee.
I'm a world committee.
I'm a member of the world committee.
I'm also an ANC member.
So firstly, I want to speak about myself. As this is in relation to electricity. I buy electricity for six hundred rands every month. And then I still buy another on top of that. So the question that I would like to pose is. Exactly what is it that actually, what is the reason for me having to buy so much expensive electricity when other people are not actually buying as much as I do? So the point that I want to establish is this. I am a world committee and my salary is bigger. But the electricity that I buy is just too much, expensive. So I'm very suspicious of the fact that there are some people who are actually stealing cable that is feeding me with electricity. So what I would like to see is, or to ask is, can the parliament or perhaps the electricity board, can they have a strategy of actually checking the units just as they do with water? Maybe checking it every month? As to whether there is accuracy in the way people are buying electricity and it being distributed to them. Because really this is leaving us bankrupt. The second point. Is in relation to the cables. So in our area, cables are being stolen all the time. So what I wanted to know is what is the timeframe once your cable has been stolen? What is the timeframe up until it's been installed? Because us as world committees or people who are working with councillors in the area. People are asking us these questions. As we report. As to when are they going to receive cable services. So the point I'm trying to establish is this. Or the people who refuse to render services. Must actually make the people who are rendering services to pull up their socks, please. And they must come into the community. And they must come and offer consumer education. So as people who are rendering services to some of these people, there are some of the questions unfortunately which we are not able to answer. For an example, some of them, they might have to come into the area, into the village. To come and explain everything about the new electricity boxes that are going to be installed. And some members of the community, they say they have a problem because they don't know these people. So that is why my request is for stakeholders or the people who have been charged with rendering services, it must be they themselves to come into the community and explain all of these things to the members of the committee about these services. So that the community can be free to accept what they are being told at the end of the day. Thank you very much. We experienced problems in the ward that I'm coming from, and this was about load shedding. There was a time when we came from the meeting, it was only us women. It is in the same ward, but one area of it had power. And the one that we were working towards was dark. It didn't have any power. So we raised a complaint as citizens to say, how come that in the very same ward, you have one section that is have no power and the other one has power? So after some three weeks, then it was apparent that power was being restored. Thank you very much, and I want to say that I do support the bill.
Let me greet our leadership. I don't know actually what to say as I look at this bill. And to a bill is the promise that the president made to us? He gave us that promise. We got it in that manner. Transformation, distribution, and generation. Here is here lies my problem. On this three issues? My question is, what is so difficult to us to do what the white people did? I am asking myself that question because, and I apologize for the word that I used. I was not supposed to use it. But my question is, on this issue of transformation and distribution, I am asking myself, why are they having challenges to help us as the community? Because this brings poverty to us as the community members. Like other speakers has already said that, you will find out that if you buy electricity for 10 rand, it is 5.2 units. And Escom still gives opportunity to other subcontractors who brings poverty to us as community members or people who utilize electricity. What I'm trying to point out here is that I'm asking myself, can't you do as you have been doing? Because you promised that when NERSA takes on the it takes over on this electricity issue, it will be better. Because now if they have Escom has to add another second person and another third party, then it brings some challenges to us as the community members. We don't get what you have been promised. The fourth part is, I would like to ask you to ask government if they won't bring some nutrients for us so that it is going to be easy for us for to to make electricity on our own. Like although I'm I'm aware and I know that should we have that opportunity, we are going to be enemies to other lands who are also doing that. But it will be better for us if we generate our own electricity. What I would like to say is that I would I am appealing to you as government to look at us and to help us as poor people because we live with this electricity. If you can check at the moment on this time and point, the television utilizes a lot of electricity, the same with fridge. And we cannot do without electricity. We live with it. And therefore, we appeal that you must think of us as poor people who live in this country to assist us with this issue of electricity. By so saying, I say I do support the bill, although I don't support it all actively. There are some points on this bill that I don't support.
Thank you very much, sir. We did not get your name.
My apology. I'm Zwanale James. I am from Butsabel. I'm the community leader.
Thank you very much. The first 10 people have spoken very well. And when I say very well, is that they they made sure that they stick to the bill. Even though there has been frustrations, but it was about electricity. And there was maximum discipline. We want to thank you for that. The there are several people who spoke about cable theft. It really showed that you are in touch with what is happening on the ground. Now, the bill, if you look at it, you will find a, what do you call this? You know, the section. That speaks exactly about cable theft and infrastructure destruction. And it will really respond to some of the issues that people were raising here, where they report cable theft, but it's not attended to. The bill seeks your views on what it is suggesting. And this is what it is suggesting. It suggests that if you are found to be stealing cables, are you going to wait until I finish? Once you are caught by the police, you must go and be either sentenced for five years. Or a fine of 1 million rands. Now, that's a bill that is brought to you by the Department of Mineral Resources and Energy. But with cable theft, the people who are a problem is not the cable thieves. It's the people who receive the cables. I'm talking about scrap yards. Because if scrap yards were not receiving cables. You would steal cables and not get money. That is why the Department of Trade, Industry and Competition is formulating a bill that seeks to close and regulate the scrap yards. So it's a two-pronged exercise by two departments. That in the near future will deal with cable theft. And make sure that when you report people who steal cables, your reporting is taken serious and is respected. I've tried to explain the issue of cable theft. The second issue I want to explain so that everybody understands better. Is the issue of unbundling, unbundling by Escom. Unbundling means the separation of trans of of generation. Transmission. And distribution. And why is that important? Is to create competition. So that when Escom fails. There is somebody who does the job that Escom was supposed to do. Now, you give me some moment. I want to explain what is generation, transmission and distribution in layman's terms. So when you go to areas like Mpumalanga and here in the northern Cape, you will see two things. In Mpumalanga, you will see those tanks. They are called coal power plant stations. Here in the northern Cape, you will see solar and wind. So the burning of coal in those power stations and the receiving of the sun in these solar PVs and the receiving of the wind to make the winter binds move is called generation of energy. That is what you call energy generation. Now, what happened when energy is generated? The electrons must be transported. And I want you to listen properly here. So what transports the electron is those big, what is the name again? Pilons, the big ones, the ones that are crossing mountains, rivers and all of that. Those are transmission lines. Their job is to be plugged to those power plant stations or winter binds or solar to transport electrons. Then there's a point where you don't see those large pylons. You see smaller yana ones. The process of distribution starts. So those poles you see that are a bit smaller and your your is it generators that transformers that takes directly electricity to your houses. That is what. That is what is called distribution.
Ki ona, linsine uhe, katse la yew, he, musabichu ka fe la, ubichua tama isha, ya motlakasi?
That is where you start having a problem. The municipality is involved...
Ki temo, gebanlibo tata, maspala wa ameha?
Escom is involved.
Escomu liyena wa ameha?
But there's lack of competition.
Impa he, hunali bu, hunalu peace, peaceana nyana mo?
So what this bill seeks to say and what the unbundling process seeks to say is that there in the first place, where there is power plants, solar, wind turbines, there must be many players that are competing with each other to generate electricity, so that we don't have shortage.
Ki kahona he, hunali bu yenya hori, hole ma nimu, rau rau ma nimu, ozo, na totlili sebesa, hu etzwa, nguru, hu etzo motlakasi, kayo na sila yew? Oshantu ubeliti kopa nyana, se sebesedi zisana, ngamo, di pisano, weteza hori, ritla rebeli, sila yahu, utama isha motlakasi katse la yene pa etze?
So for instance, we need around forty-eight megawatts to light up South Africa. Escom is now giving us around thirty-eight.
Kama ntsua man, wesa moshala?
Thirty, thirty, thirty.
Ri shoka di megawatts, itse kabam forty-eight, ho, uhanza, Africa boroka bufe la? Impa Escom yonah irifate fe la, zema sumama rar?
So that's where there must be Escom holding.
Ki kahona, oso nison, ubelibu emedi ba Escom?
As a main company.
Xaloka ili company ekasi shohu?
And then there is Generation Escom.
Ube libana ba etza, motlakasi ba Escom?
So it's not privatization, it's still Escom.
Inse bile iliona, Escomu kabuyon?
But it will compete with other players.
Impa he, etanga hisana, lebanka kagolo baban?
Including yourselves.
Mo holi luna kabununa?
You would have heard the president announce that at some point, if you do solar and you do it at a more larger scale, when you use it and you don't need more than you have, you will resell it to Escom.
Li kilenakala, utla mo presidenta nashalosa tenwa, ra ha, uka ipumana uetsa solar, ui etza bo emo mboho dimu? Uka ipumana utlamewa hori, ui tama isha ilotusa Escom?
So that's where the competition will happen.
Ki temo namori pisano, lirinangisa, no dibanti?
But Escom as a company that is state-owned will have to be still supplying or generating electricity.
Impa Escomu kahali ona, ki muhalo, uwe lantlasa, lefapale uwe lantlasa muso, batla ninense batxola pilu, etza motlakasi?
Then there is what you find there in the bill, it's called transmission, fully? TSO. In full, it's transmission what? Systems operator.
Rali, onasikamalomono, utla bono, onali TSO, ewu liyona, ilin sistime tla tama isha motlakasi?
Those are the big lines I was talking about.
Ki zo, na di, di, hoka ha nyotse, xolu se, neki buakazona seu?
That infrastructure you can't just give to anyone appazzedly, it must be this line that we have as government under Escom.
Rali, marangrang au, asiaka fuwa manli man, ki shantu ibe sila zona, senatsenali zona, li, ri li muso li Escom?
Well, because many who are generating electricity and need to transmit it, we are creating this transmission TSO to regulate what is transmitted.
Rali, kaba kalahu baani, hunali ritlopatsanga tsetla ben di, ngangisa na, bo emo mbono? Ki kahona, re ntsen, SO yena, hori ibeyona etla tlas tama isha na, motlakasi kayo?
That is a transmission line we will not give to...
As it's a, sila yaza, tama isha motlakasi, ifing kapai, ifing erika re nea, man kapama, batubadi huweboze, ike metsin?
And then there will be distribution.
Ibe, herutla ba le tama isha?
There are questions you asked us here. Who will be regulating the tariffs? Will they be the same price when you buy there and there and there? It won't be the same price, but NERSA will say, just like they do with data bundles. If you remember, data bundles were expensive in South Africa and government had to come and say, "No, the maximum is this."
Le, xale, li ributsese, ributsose, dinse isengor na, ki bo mamba tla isan di keto, za huke na di tifelo, iba se xang, itlabanefsana? Rali, habana iki se se di keto ba leban, ozo, na fe la likata ba inaya di data? Ha iba nila hopula, hunali na koyonendile, udimu kaditeko, impa muso, uina wa kenella wariche, le shantu le fe lebu emo mbona?
So that's what we call tariff setting by NERSA.
Ki ona, ntsu ring, etla be ele di pehel, oza nerfsa, se zahu, utama isha di tifiso?
But because there will be different players competing, for instance, if I get into the space and you are selling one unit at hundred, at one rand fifty, I may decide to sell it at one rand.
Xalo, impa he, hunali bangangisa, ni ba banganga tabatlan kaka rolo? Wesa moshala, ha iba ni, we na, uli emo wa bankanka rolo? Ureki sa di unitisa hau, iba udiriki sa, kati feloi, se iba one rand, one point, one rand fifty unity? Nakinalo, ona urinkala, kariyaka, kitla ireki sa kara nta fe?
Logically, people will come to me who is selling electricity at one rand, not at one rand fifty.
Ntsalekuya kyo, batwata tlahuna ya tla ireki sa kara nta, basa yu, huena wa one rand fifty?
Immediately that happens, that one who is selling at one fifty will have to come low to compete with me.
Ha uesa halaseu, yana ireki sangka one fifty, utla teua, atle horanta leena, utla ngangisa nalini?
That's where competition is nice.
Ki temo, di pisano, lirinangisa no, di, di trudisano, di bammona titing?
Just like ShopRide, Spa, Woolworth, they have their market, but at the end of the day, people go where prices allow.
Xaloka reka reza, moshalaka, ShopRide, Spa, reza li woolwets, di pisano, liri teko zabo na hadilikani? Impa pelisonyali zati, batu kabonganga, tabansaba ya ma nimu, teko dilin trastiting?
I'm sorry to have taken long, but I just thought I must just, in the language that everyone will understand, explain at length.
Ki kupatsorelo hori, bekin kilenaku etelele, impani, itwatla hori, kitla bo emo mboho kabona, kitla etza tlaluso, seu batwata duutlu si sanghan?
So that it helps those that are going to speak next.
Hori senasitlasi tuse, ba obalatelang, batu tlamba bua balatelang?
I had recognized number one.
Ki se ki bo ni, lisopili?
Number one?
Lapili?
Yes, come what? Mama, you were number two.
Uena, utlaba obubedi mi?
The three gentlemen, the one who is standing will be number four.
Lona bonta, teba dutsimau, ah, ilin, tlaban number four?
It's number three, eh?
Ki number three?
Four?
Wabuune?
No, no, in the middle? Yes. Five?
Wabu lchanu?
No, no, the white shirt?
Wa hempetseu?
Six?
Wabu tsilela?
Seven, mama?
Wabu super?
Eight?
Waboro beji?
My chief, eight, yes. Where? Okay. Can you advise how many we have now?
Reserena lebaba kay, honajal?
We need how many?
Ri shoka bababa kay?
No, no. I will make an exception, eh? I'll make an exception, add one chair, you will be number ten?
Utlaba walisume we na?
And then Tata, you will be number eleven?
Ntati tla ba, wabu eleven?
We will conduct ourselves the manner in which we have conducted ourselves in the first round, okay? The difference between the first round and this round will be you will have three minutes to speak. You will have three minutes to speak and when you exceed three minutes, I want you to listen to me carefully. When you exceed three minutes, I will not stop you, but I will do this to the mic, just to indicate that it's time to wrap up. Because stopping people is not what we pride ourselves in doing. Number one?
Uh, bili, ndata akala, uh, mosampia unashalosa hori, utla tla, afan, afamule monse bakasamezuze me? Uh, amezuzuha hau, isefidile, la keke o emisa, utla, utla, uh, maikiha ha, ho, shoko meisa fe la hori, opetelikda batzaha?
Uh, kileweswaka sekisifueng, kilewewe, we da pilwa Portfolio Committee, le eschavasutli, ozo, mechalonye fapani. Ya bua mona, ki Tatos Echolo, uh, Community Police Forum, Sector Seven?
Um, I'd like to thank the Portfolio Committee, the audience here, and to thank you for the opportunity. My name is Devo Stro.
Tatos Echolo.
Tatos Echolo, um, what?
Uh, CPF member, Sector Seven.
CPF member, Sector Seven.
Uh, honarele, Community Police Forum, more na lebotata, ba ujua adi kable? Xaloka ha, sekishebili, amenmen bili yena, na etla kisi se hori? Uh, ujua adi kableli, oto motauchuan kableuto four or five years? But imba honarele, Community Police Forum, mo, areboninto etza ha? Wila ba liketza halu, etza halan?
We as the CPF have seen this problem of cable theft and we have also seen that the bill mentions that if you are found guilty of cable theft, you will be sentenced to five years, but we have not seen this happening.
Ri li ravalabotata, ba hori moto, au tzen kable, letla me, akinyete case, ki, ki kampani yew, eluren, eh, 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 sebesa kamotlakas? Xaloka, ha ibe kampani yew, ha, ha ibe kampani yenu, ha imufuma, motenau tzen, tu, au tzen kable? Ah, honu shawo wa? Ki kahodi, ot community, di sa honu, di sa honu, osharamu, di sa honu, omo ten? Bam, bam, mona ku na, na tze ru ma, impa, kampani esahonu, mokineta? Esahonu, mokineta, case, motu na, atwa?
Uh, we have seen a case where a person was found having stolen cable, but the electricity company had to arrest this person, but they were unable to do so. This is why world committees are not able to arrest these people, because it's the responsibility of the company to have these people apprehended.
Just, just a minute, sir, and I'm sorry for this. I heard you saying the sentences that are proposed there are not enough. Do you want to make a proposal?
Uh, motauchuen kableli, eh, ha ibe suggesting, or motauchuen kableli, eh, etlatse, zu, ibe ten years, kahu ba, etza buli, mbobo nga, de esinyeza li, nahayaru?
My suggestion is that the sentence be made to ten years because cable theft is a serious problem that is impeding our country.
Leta benya, the rules and regulations, se garale kashewisana, ha ulu xang, hale apuenta di kampani, because rebaba labotata, honarele spolisa, sponisa, asahonu sharamoten, etla me, ebekampani, akinyeta moto, khot? Xaloka?
Um, also, in the, in the section of rules and regulations, we would like you to relook at it, because we as the police have an issue, because it is the companies that are supposed to open a case for, for these people.
Kahu, kidumela na libili, le hapega, gasebesa hamoa, ha ulu xang, ta benya, the rules and regulations, se, reha tella kawa, is xale, sejile si ti, karamuzwa, honata bayadi kableli? Batwa, ingana ku etelele kableli, karamuzwa, hona he ujui, se batwa, hona ba, baba lena ku etelele, ba savile motlakas?
As such, I would like us to work together with the police in order to stop this issue of cable theft, because it severely affects our communities. When there's been cable theft, our communities go for a long period without any electricity.
Ya okatela, ekibatla, we, tlatse zafela, ki hori, honarele, Community Police Forum, ekar, nationali, ekar, konsidera, lokali, recebesa ka fe la, di di kampani, oso komela, di tipa ya, ya, ya government ya ro, kahu, ya lebu?
Um, I would like to end off-
Sorry, sir, sorry, sir. I, I, before you interpret, I know you repeated your name, but we could not hear properly your name and surname.
Uh, Tatos Echolo, CPF member, Sector Seven.
Uh, I would like to end off by saying I support the bill and I will request that you allow the CPF to work together with government and the companies in order to stop the issue of cable theft. Di melama, holo? Good afternoon. Nakemboni Mudise? My name is Boni Mudise.
Kidilu four double three nine, Morocco location in Tabancho?
I live at four double three nine, Morocco location, Tabancho.
Ki kilemo, kilemo ahi, wa Tabancho?
I came here as a resident of Tabancho.
Wa Morocco location?
Of Morocco location. I acknowledge everything that have, that has been said about the bill and electricity related issues as they will move us forward. I would just appeal to the parliamentary committee to work with COCTA as it is the, uh, parliament, uh, traditional house. In Tabancho, uh, when you are in the suburb, in the town, you belong to, uh, the municipality, but when you are in the other sections, you belong to COCTA. And this affects us in this way. Uh, this is very important and I would like you to please take note of it. The traditional house has a way that it works in. It works in that you will go and get assistance. And, and when you are done, the issue now becomes electricity. Because the electricity is done by the municipality. That's why I'm appealing to you to come together and fix this. I came with submissions and names of people who since 2001 up to 2012 have not gotten electricity supply. And our constitution does not allow for one person to, to get electricity and another person to not get it. The problem is where those who have title deeds have four numbers. And those who don't have title deeds but who have paid at COCTA have three numbers. It differs in that? Those who have four numbers will appear on the municipal list and the ones who don't have will not appear. It is very, it is a very hurtful situation because it also affects or applies to the water situation. That's why I'm appealing to you to please take important notice of it. I will leave these submissions there so you can see what I'm talking about. Another important issue is the issue of illegal connections in the locations. Uh, I wish you would bring people who would, uh, when they receive reports of illegal connections, would know how to do their job. These people, our, our black people are getting paid. That's why nothing will go right. I was also talking about electricity that was running on the ground. It did not benefit us in Tabancho.
Thank you mama, thank you very much. Good people, rules are rules. Let's respect the chairperson's rules. I did say I'm giving you three minutes. However, if you exceed, I will not stop you. I will just indicate that wrap up and when I do so, please wrap up. Thank you, next.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Tawole Mukhale. I'm from mining communities affected, united in action.
I'm from mining communities affected and united in action.
As Makua, we are opposing this bill. Ki hore already, mtoya unbundling, luto faminyenana hobo rahuemo. Hore ba produce mutlakas. Already mutlakas hore nabatu basa seviziin.
Um, as it is already happening now, uh, we are opposing, we are opposing the, this issue of unbundling because it's, you are, it is going to give all those who are already owning companies or corporations to generate electricity and it does not give the opportunity to poor people.
Our submission actually, as Makua, we are saying that the rush to push this bill through the participation process at all costs also stand the, stand as a stark reminder that the same politicians who are now rushing to prioritize our energy system so, 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 so that private investors can benefit and accumulate wealth. Accumulate the wealth or at the expense of the marginalized and poor communities and have also ignored our calls for a more fair and just legislative regime and for marginalized and affected communities. Accordingly, we call all, uh, we call on the portfolio committee and parliament to reject the bill in its entirety in so that, in so far as it seeks to subject impoverished masses of excluded and marginalized citizens to the evil mechanisms of the market and the varucious appetite of private profit. Lo na jualin seritiba, la rita re majority of us, we oppose this bill because of muso busankuona olorinki majority. Lo, nanse implementa, serunar sahane. Na, ribana nse osnalamulemo, or lesinye chaltea musuaru, or nelele moona na, lilito ribota or na dibilte na huesa la inga tabasamutlakasi. Salu na otamile fele, lene lulu kise or mutlakasu, ugrubale, uh, mutlakasu, odula ngue, emeka na kutena tu, shobani, uaswa na, li edka opusa ngao feleka mu. Lintoto implementa, ki how many times lita moranze liribota orri. Arriba ati ntothe na te ite, ne resti nte likolo implementa ntothe jualin. So, hola mulewa or nelete moranze lita ba holi, li halin kiliketo la hui. Lito implementa ntothe ta orri, li amende this bill.
Okay, so as far as I see it, there is no point in the parliament coming here because, uh, the majority of us in here oppose this bill, but you have already made up your mind that you will pass this bill as-